Councilmember Lembriss? Refused. Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Wees?
Here.
Oh, Mr. Lembriss.
Mayor Nogolia?
Here.
Mayor Whitmer?
Here.
Our next committee members, Lee? Walker?
Here.
Omly? Petheal? Polito?
Here.
I guess it's just your meatball.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Public comments are reserved for items that are on the agenda and we have a couple of them. We have five of them.
Whoops, sorry about that. Why you even got it in the way?
Is that a public comment?
That was a knee jerk reaction.
That item was not on the agenda. Okay. Seeing no public make public comments, okay. Closed public comments. And we're on action item one, which is the work authorization to record notice of completion for the library demolition and the abatement project.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I'll be stepping out because of myself due to proximity to the project.
Okay. And don't stand on the steps, get out in the rain.
Thank you so much.
Don't hear what we're doing.
Don't go too far, it's gonna take a minute.
You can stay on it right there, it doesn't matter.
It won't be that long.
I was just joking.
Doesn't say you can't hear. The law doesn't say you can't hear, it says you can't influence.
We're just making a joke.
I know, but he was going across the street.
Okay, all right, let's go, let's go.
So, item number one, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is acceptance of work for the authorization to record a notice of completion for the library demolition and abatement project. As you know, the library's been demolished. There was one change order to that project that was added to demolish the Public Works building over here, but it's also now gone. So this is the acceptance of the work and authorizing the accreditation of the notice of completion for demolition of the project number five six zero eight seven.
Any questions for staff on that? Seeing no questions. Any public comments on this? Oh, no. Okay. Closed public comments. Any further comments and/or a proposal for a vote?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No, okay. Bring Mike back in. Number two, award of the contract for Middlefield Road Class II bikes, bike lanes. Oh, we'll wait for Mike to come back. He was going across the street.
You guys pushed him all the way out the door.
This is still raining? Hold up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This is the award of contract for the Middlefield Road Class II bicycle lanes improvement project, project number five six zero eighty-one in the CIP project plan. Approval of a construction management professional services agreement for the same. We postponed this from the last council meeting. We had the bids came in, they came in lower as you can see in the staff report, but we needed to negotiate the professional services for the construction management. That came in a lot higher than we anticipated, so Robert Abadi was able to negotiate with that proposal to lower that cost based on shared services and other opportunities. So at the end, it's the award of the project for the Middlefield Road Class II to the lowest responsive bidder, Golden Bay Construction of Hayward, in the amount of $289,945. Authorizing change orders up to 30,000. Directing the city attorney to prepare the contract, authorize the city manager to execute that contract, and then direct the city attorney to prepare and myself to execute the professional services agreement for construction management to Hill International in the amount of $58,519.71 with additional services up to $7,000. As you know, this project was far more costly for the town when we entered into it. Robert was also able to negotiate with PG&E for their contemporary project at the same time. Almost $500,000 savings overall to the town for this project. $400,000 from PG&E, they're doing their work in advance of ours, and then they're gonna come back and do the repaving and slurry. And then the construction management services came in lower as well as part of that negotiation. And then the construction contract from Golden Bay came in, almost $180,000 under the engineer's estimate. So this is a huge project win for the town. That money goes back into the CIP general fund.
Great. So, any questions yet?
So, we received money, grants, right? And so, how much, I forget now, how much money did you get? Like 700 or something?
I thought there were two grants.
There were two grants. One, we are using for this project, that's the SMTCA Measure A grant, which requires the local match. That one's being used for this project. The other is being reallocated to a street project in town on James Road. And they offered that up. If we would lose the grant as part of this project, we were able to reallocate it. It's an O-BAG grant, I think it was.
Okay. I think this is great.
And the SMPCA grant was for how much?
SMCTA grant for the construction phase of $733,000.
That makes sense. So, $733,000, what we're looking at today is net of that $733,000?
Correct. We only get the grant of what we get.
But don't we have to award a construction contract that would include that $733,000 cost?
No, we only get the portion of the grant that we actually use. So if the project cost was less than $733,000, the grant amount goes down to match that.
So it's not net of that? In fact, we're gonna use the entire grant to cover our entire costs on this project, is that correct?
No. Our cost is $289,000. That's the construction part of the grant. It's a 10% match for the grant. So, I think the grant amount's gonna drop and pay the difference.
I wish I had a complete counter.
Yeah, I'll give you the full accounting of where the cost.
That's what I was.
Construction's $289,000. It was gonna be $476,000. Then PG&E has about $400,000 something thousand worth of their work that's gonna be added to that cost.
Wait, what was the $476,000?
It was our construction estimate. Because it actually came in at $289,000. Our share, $289,000. PG&E's coming in with another $400,000 to do the parts of the project we took out and gave to them. So overall, probably $600,000 something thousand total project cost.
PG&E, I'm sorry, it's just not being presented in a way that's clear. PG&E's $400,000 is being taken on by them because they're doing a project on Middlefield Road.
Yeah.
So I understand if they weren't, we would have additional costs, but they are, so we don't have those costs.
Correct.
And I understand that the bid that we've received is $289,000, $290,000, and that the management of that project is $58,000 some odd thousand. And we have a grant for $733,000. Where we'll use, will we, so, am I understanding that we will use some of that grant towards this management and construction cost?
Yes.
You said something about 10%.
Yeah, we have to have a local match.
They'll give us 10% of what we spend?
10% has to be town funds.
Oh, so they pay 90%?
Yeah. As a local match. And then the grant pays for the difference. But it's not gonna be up to the $733,000.
So there's been no change to the project since we saw the detailed sheets?
Correct.
Because my impression, and maybe my recollection is wrong, was that it was like, you know, 1.5 million dollars?
That's exactly what it was.
That was the engineering estimate a couple of years ago? And then as it went through the iterations, the project cost dropped?
That never happens.
That's amazing.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'll have Robert pull the project.
So, I just wanna know how much money are we writing out of our checking account for this project? And how much money is the grant of funding? And then what happens to the rest of the money if the grant is only funding a portion of their $700,000?
It goes back to the granting agency.
That's fine.
And the other grant that we received, the O-BAG grant, which was also allocated to this project, will stay in town and allocate to a different project.
To the James project.
Correct.
So it sounds like at the end of the day, we're bearing 10% of $290,000 plus $58,000 some odd thousand?
Yeah.
And the grant's covering the remainder of it? Which, that's perfectly understandable. The thing that's shocking to me is that we went from 1.5 million dollar estimate to, when you count PG&E, what's about $750,000. It's 50% of what the original estimate was.
Maybe $300,000.
Three years ago, the project was different.
Just, I know it was asking a lot of us. It sounds like about $88,000 coming out, $80,000 to $90,000 coming out from us, right?
General fund line.
Yeah, okay. And the other $700 from somewhere else. I'm good with that.
You know, I typically like, you know, feel that your staff reports are, you know, really well played out in detail, but this one was confusing to me.
It was, I absolutely agree, and it's mostly the finance part of it.
All right, okay.
But not Robert's fault, I'm just saying. It's the way the money transitions. Not Robert's fault, it's the way the money transitions.
So maybe in your Friday letter, you'd have that accounting, it shows what was there, and maybe even a comparison to the 1.5 million, just so we can kind of rest, you know, get squared away.
And I think with the design, some of the design changes to reduce the, at the time, you know, from that 1.5 million to...
Mike, you had a question.
Yeah, is that normal for a professional services management contract to run 20% of the cost of a project like that?
It was less normal for it to be, it was originally $158,000 was its original estimate of cost to do this project.
What do they do to that?
They do inspection services, you know, potholing and things like that. They do, they protect the, inspect where the utility lines are, where the lights are way in, the size of the road, the pavement consistency.
Our staff has virtually no, nothing to worry about.
There's just more contract management, correct.
And the number looks weird, but remember, they're supervising the stuff that PG&E and other people are doing too, so it's really, it's $50,000, but it's not $289,000 that they're supervising. They're supervising the whole project.
Or about $700,000.
Right, yeah, exactly, $750,000, yeah.
All right, so are there any other questions?
No.
I'm sorry, yes, I do have one more question.
So, just following up on what Robert said, in terms of design changes, my worry on
this project, it was very hard for us to get this project moved forward. It like went through, it was like pulling something very thick through something like quicksand. And we finally got it, and I'm just concerned that there's design changes, that it's not exactly those, we looked at those detailed maps of every foot of the road from where, you know, Atherton starts on the north all the way to, I think we changed where the endpoint was, but it's just, I think maybe it's the Oak Grove intersection, I don't recall where the endpoint is, but it's close to the school. I think originally it went to Ravenswood and cut it back.
Right, because Annalene Park is gonna do something.
Right, so, but, that detailed design assessment, that hasn't changed?
It has not changed. That's what was bid. My bigger concern is one that what the mayor and I were discussing is, or maybe it was one of you that I was discussing with.
What was the?
It was a low bid.
Oh, yeah, the bid difference is huge.
The highest bid was almost $600,000.
No, $515,000.
And if there was consistency in the number two, and number three, or number four bidders, like they have to the Civic Center, there's some assurance that nobody missed something.
So we may have gotten a low ball bid, and we may have a management problem on our hands.
Yes.
But we paid enough for the manager.
You recommend manager. But again, the divvying up and sending back of the grant money isn't done until the project is done.
Correct.
So...
We have some money to add to the...
If there were change orders in the year or something, yes.
They're gonna pay 90% of it.
So, I just wanna make sure also, since we're going into this level of detail, I wasn't prepared to do that, but like all the green painting for the bikes, that it's not, it's gonna be the non-skid kinda stuff, because there are some painting on for bike lanes that when it gets wet, the bikes skid and everything, so we have to be careful about that?
We are, it's exactly as whatever the council specked out and the bid's back.
It's not the thermoplastic?
It's not the thermoplastic like we did for the bike lanes. It's paint.
That one we, that little speed bump.
All right, so, are there any public comments? Are we done with questions? I'm not trying to move people on that quickly.
No problem.
Okay, any public comments? No public comments? Not closed public comments? Final comments here, and then I'm moving.
Well, I'm happy to move that we accept the bid, right? That we award the construction project to Golden Bay Construction, and that we award the management, the professional management project to Hill International, Inc., for the amount stated from the staff report.
And direct the city attorney and the city manager to execute that.
Adopt a recommendation on staff. There you go.
As noted, one of two.
Okay, I'll second that. Can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving on. Item number three.
Mr. Mayor, kind of, we have a problem. We don't have a quorum of the audit committee, so they, it's not a joint meeting, you can't have a joint meeting with less than a quorum of both. So it could be a city council, the city council can continue to discuss it, and the two members that are here just become members of the public, so they can participate as members of the public as is proper.
Okay, all right. Okay, good, good, thank, good point, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Should we maybe postpone this item until after the other two items, just in case somebody else shows up? Unless you guys were thinking of leaving, or you were...
No.
Are you expecting anybody else?
You should think that I'm coming.
I never expected anybody except the two of us. And Massey usually shows up, of course, and I remember the committee.
I told me he was gonna show up.
I thought, what guy never comes? He just doesn't show up. But last year, we still had the meeting with the finance committee, and it wasn't a forum last year either.
So, we're not taking any action. If we, if we were to postpone this meeting, if we were to postpone this portion, what would that do to your schedule, Robert? And could we do it as part of the other council meeting, or do you recommend not doing that at all?
I would recommend not doing it. I think the vice mayor was suggesting that we flip the two items and wait for a third member if they were coming.
But if they wanna leave, which I can understand, then I would not, I would withdraw that suggestion and just go forward.
Could I ask a question? Because I mean, I'll stay if I need to stay. When would you normally expect a council meeting to wrap up? Six? Because I do have to leave by six.
Six.
We'll be wrapped.
We're moving along at breakneck speed.
Yeah, we will definitely end by six, though.
You know, we have to tell them, we're not really moving that fast, we have to tell them.
I see Mike. Okay, so...
We haven't gotten to that.
With the council's approval, we can rearrange the calendar. Does everyone agree that we should take item four and five before we hit three? Is that okay?
If it's in agreement with the audit committee.
Or if we are running late and it's like, because we've got a thick presentation, if it gets to be 5:15, then we would, we would do this item, okay?
Right.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
I'm happy.
Excellent suggestion.
Kerry?
I am all about time.
I don't send the question.
Keep everything on time, right?
Have you ever seen that council settle, you know?
Okay. Item number four.
I can't come to that.
So what? Okay.
Item number four?
Item number four, discussion of potential utility undergrounding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You heard a similar item at a prior meeting where we discussed the Rule 28 funds, and one of the things the council asked for was an opportunity to discuss the potential for undergrounding some utility lines that might be around the exterior of the Civic Center parcel. There are no utilities above ground in the Civic Center parcel, so this doesn't discuss that parcel at all. But we looked at the lines that are on the Fair Oaks side, which would potentially qualify for the use of Rule 28 funds. When, and there's a visual in your staff report...
This is the operative.
Yeah, that looks like the one that the vice mayor's holding out. It's probably your best visual. So on the east side of the tracks, there is an above-ground pole with a cell tower on top of it. That one is not proposed to be undergrounded. As you move toward the train station, across the tracks, there's a singular pole that you can see from the parking lot of Town Hall. That one is proposed in this plan to be undergrounded. And then it would connect to another utility pole on the edge of the Civic Center parcel on the Fair Oaks side.
It's on our side.
That's on our side of the street, that is also not proposed to be undergrounded. PG&E requires that it be either a block, or that it be a minimum of 600 mill feet. So those pole, three poles would constitute a block. Undergrounding those three poles would be more money than we have in the 1.4, 1.5 million.
Would undergrounding only the middle pole?
Only the middle pole is close to that 1.4, 1.5 million, we just don't have a fine handle on that till we would actually do an engineering report. One of the requirements of undergrounding that singular pole would mean that we would have to underground under the Caltrain tracks to get to the cell tower pole on the other side, and then underground to that west side pole to connect to that one. If we wanted to underground the west side pole as well, then we would also have to underground the two poles in the Fair Oaks cul-de-sac on the other side, and then that again goes far beyond the 1.4, 1.5 Rule 28 funds. So in reality, the only feasible pole would be that singular pole, and we still don't have a fine handle on that cost until we do an engineering report, which could be somewhere between 20 and 30K as a swag.
Do we get to use those credits to pay for that report?
You only get to use those credits to pay for that report if the district is actually approved. If you decide at the end of doing that report that it's too costly, you're on the hook for the engineering report. The other option, if you don't want to underground, is to hold on to the funds until such time as there's a future district in the future that you want to use them for. The catch there is the cost of construction and the cost of undergrounding is probably not gonna get less expensive, and we only accrue about $25,000 a year. So that cost could outpace the other. And then the third option is to just hold on to the funds, set a minimum sale point, 30 cents, 40 cents, 50 cents on the dollar, sit and wait until you get that, and then sell them at that point? Or just sell them?
All right. Do I have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, isn't there an additional option, which would be to do the engineering report, and once it came in, judge how to handle it? Obviously, if it's within, I think it's 1.525 million, if you count five years of borrowing ahead, then we could do it, and that would pay for the engineering report. And if it was, it's not gonna be enormously more, but if it's somewhat more than, wouldn't there be an option for us to go out into the market and to buy, you know, at whatever, 25% of value, somebody else's 428 funds?
Yes.
So in fact, if it's $100,000 over, maybe we can do it for a relatively small amount of money. I mean, I guess the real issue for us is that, it's one pole. Do we, how big a deal was it looking at the wires? Nobody likes looking at wires.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor, please. It's not just aesthetics, but is there a dangerous situation with that pole being where it is, and how the road curves after you come across the railroad tracks? If I'm reading it correctly, then Fair Oaks, and has it ever, you know, been involved in an accident, you know, car hitting it? Because, you know, that little S curve is not the, and especially with large trucks or big buses that go by, is there a risk of that pole being hit?
Not in recent history, but doesn't mean it wouldn't happen tomorrow. And it is an above-ground pole.
Above-ground.
We are kind of improving that interception as we do the Civic Center project.
Right.
And moving the stop sign from that location as well, so, don't know what changes that will have. Another district does take two, three years.
If it were a safety issue, you know, that would be a little bit more compelling to spend that much money if it's just aesthetics, unless we're, you know, because there's wires running all over Atherton above ground, and the aesthetics are offensive with all the above ground. And so, at some point, I'd like to see we look at a town-wide program to somehow do assessments and pay for undergrounding our utilities.
Part of the, part of the timeline for an underground utility district is there's a large queue with PG&E, and PG&E would have to be involved in the engineers' report in terms of assessing what their cost and what their impact would be. And so they don't assign folks to it just to do our report to get it, so there's a queue for that. So if I had to estimate, if we started an engineering report, it'd probably be a couple of years before we get into their queue to actually form a district to move forward.
So this, we should look at this, start going?
If it's aesthetics, electrification's coming. And so I'm not sure that we're gaining all that much if we're taking down one wire and putting up...
Four more.
Four, yeah, you know, so that just raised that point. But I do like, by the way, well, look at the comments, I like where we're going.
If we were to say, we could wait, or we could see what's available on the open market for other jurisdictions' Rule 28 funds, how long would it take to get, to see what that market is? Is that market something that's published regularly, or do you have to contact firms, or you go through PG&E, or what do you do?
We go through PG&E and see what funds are out there, they have them on their website. But there's a question out there right now with respect to what the value of those Rule 28 funds are with respect to PG&E's current financial situation.
Ah.
Okay.
They stopped the electrification of the rail line, too.
Or just electricity in general.
It does sound, though, the timing issue that you just related, that we shouldn't be doing this in connection with the Civic Center project, because in fact, we may not even have the district established before the Civic Center is completed.
Unless you wanna just sell them today.
Oh, no, but I mean, if we wanted to underground them.
Right.
But...
Any other questions that are real questions? Okay, any public comments? Okay, closed public comments, then let's go ahead and have the final discussion on this, whether or not we want to do it, or we don't wanna do it, we wanna delay, we wanna see what's on the open market, or we wanna... Kerry?
I think that it's gonna be a lot more complex because of the electrification. If it was a safety factor, I would be rather interested in it in that sense. But my concern is, is that going in that direction, even though George has mentioned two years, I think it's gonna be substantially longer because the impacts with the electrification and the poles, electrifying that, is gonna change with how long the analysis is gonna be to go underneath when they're putting cantilever lines over the top in. So I am concerned in that respect. But a nice idea, I mean, nice concept, if, you know, we're waiting so long. I mean, I don't think that number's going up. I think the number's gonna drop with the fortune inside of what's going on with PG&E, and that's all we can predict, is the value of that going down. So I don't think 30, 90 cents is off mark, but it's probably gonna go a lot lower in the near future.
And I think their timeline for doing these projects will extend.
Yeah. We had that, as you remember correctly, at Watkins when they were considering going through it, there was delay after delay, after delay after delay, so I would anticipate the same thing going in that direction, because once Caltrain's in the middle of it, which they will be. No, I think I see no great option. I'd be curious to see, if there's an effective market, it might be worth putting out on a mouse but put option or something. Would you just say if it hits 70 cents, we'll just take it? And if it doesn't, we'll just let it sit for a year, or two, or three, or four? I don't know how robust the market is, whether it's possible to do that or not.
Well, it would be an internal thing, and we would just watch it.
So that might be interesting, otherwise I think we're just, I mean, sit tight, like, sit tight.
I went out and I looked at the poll, again, yesterday with George, and while I'm, you know, I can go either way, it is, walking out the front door of the Civic Center, it does, it'd be nice if it was gone. However, I'm not interested really in spending additional money. I would say we should wait and, as well, and, and see what the market's going to look like, both for selling as well as for buying. And it'd be nice if we could just periodically just understand that. And then if, if in fact, there are these credits that are available at a, at a low rate, given PG&E's situation, then we think that we could grab them at a nominal cost. It might be worthwhile, but other than that, and, and if the market's high, we may want to, you know, sell it. But, but I, I think we should just keep an eye on it and then you recommend, so they cancel and perhaps we should bring it back if, if ever.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have that for me?
Oh, good.
Yeah, I have a comment. I mean, I like the idea of selling it if you can get seven cents for it, but I have no confidence that's true. And.
Seven cents?
Seventy, seventy.
Seventy cents off at all.
Yeah. That's a no-brainer right there.
I, I mean, I like the idea of using the money rather than having it sit in a fund that's accumulating meaningless amount of money every year. In fact, the increased cost of doing the work probably exceeds the amount we increase our fund by. So I guess I would, I, I think the comment about safety and the comment about electrification wires are really good comments. I, I think it would be helpful to know if the police could do a search to see if in that intersection there's been accidents and whether that pole looks like the poles on the north side of the road would, has had any impact, that would be helpful. In general, I'd rather use the funds than just sit on them because I don't think they're, we're losing money to sit on them. And I guess, you know, I, I had thought we could do it during the Civic Center and it made sense, but it doesn't sound like this.
Timing-wise, it would be after.
Possibly.
Well, okay, so we made a recommendation. I don't know if you, I think.
Maybe we can bring it back.
We can bring back some accident information based on that intersection.
Yeah.
At a future council meeting and then every few months or so, we'll check into that PG&E thing and if it's of interest, we'll report that.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, after that, when you say, or you can turn it up to the market itself, you said, what's PG&E thing? The PG&E webpage that says, hey, these recent transactions on Rule twenty-eight money and here's what they were. And checking it every few months is sufficient? Yeah, it doesn't change that much. There's only been like two or three.
Yeah, I'm suggesting quarterly.
It's not as lucrative as any other market. We're not talking about like thousands of a second or anything.
All right. Okay, so, okay, moving then to item number five, which is a discussion on term limits and deciding whether or not we want to change that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This was brought up at the last council meeting that, by the vice mayor to have on the agenda the table that Teresa's put together for you of the commission and committees that the town has, of their terms, term dates, and any notes related there too, in an effort to try and stagger in a more effective manner the termination of those terms. So such that, I mean, there's a number of options. Many committees do a three-two if there's a five-member committee, other committees do a one-one-one-two, so that somebody's coming off every year. The thought of the one-one-one-two is it's easier to fill a single appointment than it is to fill three or to fill two in any given particular year. So it's before you this evening, just for some review and discussion and feedback, if you'd like us to bring back the resolution so you can make those adjustments, we can do that based on any suggestions that you have. In order to modify the committees, it's by resolution. If you wanted to modify the planning commission, that's an actual ordinance change and that's a little more complicated. And that's the staff.
Okay. Any questions on the staff report?
I do, but I.
You are done.
I answered my own minute.
Okay. Any public comments on the staff?
I didn't.
You have questions?
No, I, I thought you said comments.
No, I asked for public comments, so, okay, closing public comments. Now we're back to council for comments.
So just, I'm going to comment because of the rail representative and it's the only no-term committee.
Other than Bob Palillo, like this.
Oh, Bob's, Bob's got a life commitment. Well, it's rail. Well, CAC, yeah, okay, I guess, but just in reference to the rail committee, I think that it would be healthy to create some, some term limits to keep an influx of people in and, and not, I mean, we've been getting, as you know, several, and one in particular complaints about, you know, the, the committee's been kind of acting in a way that, you know, nobody there feels touchable. And I guess in fact, if there were term limits to an extent, it just, it seems like a reasonable comment for members of the public and it seems like it'd be reasonable to impose term limits. Those same people may apply to those positions and that'd be something we could deal with when those term limits are up, but I think it'd be, be healthy. Not that anybody cares.
I, I, Carrie, I agree with your comment. You know, we do have the resolution that if no, if you're termed, if you're termed out and no one applies for your position, then you can reapply.
Right.
You know, so I don't know what the interest is in the community for being on the rail committee, but at least a complaint that I've heard from at least one resident was that maybe we should have term limits so that if other people wanted to get on it, then there would be a way for them to get on it without continually expanding the committee.
Yeah, and through the mayor. There's been a lot of activity on the rail and it's surprising how many people pop up with all the activity we've had. And with all the changes that are going on in the quarter, I think that there's more interest in not just trains, you know, choo-choo, it's what's going on in the quarter. So I think that we will have more interest as things go on in the quarter. So I think that opening it up to, you know, maybe a different dynamic, maybe would get us a curtain feel of what people feel related to the quarter.
With respect to rails, not only do they don't have term limits, they don't have terms.
Correct. Right. It's almost a life appointment.
What was the theory behind that?
There was no one at the time when, when it was founded back with Jim Janz and actually Jack Ringham, two thousand three, you know, Malcolm Dudley, that they were kind of a core group. And honestly, there have been members who have gone off for natural causes. I'm just saying.
I was on the committee, I love that committee, I still have it.
Yeah, but you were a representative, a council representative.
No.
Oh, that's right.
No, he was on the committee before he was a member of the council.
But then you became a council member, so that changed the dynamic. But I'm just saying, I, I kind of disagree. I think that if anything, we should expand it, you know, if you want new blood or new ideas or whatever, Carrie, I just, I would not want to arbitrarily say, okay, now you've been on the committee too long, Jack and Greg and Malcolm, and you need to go. I just don't think that we want, I, I want to do that.
It, it's not meant to be offensive, but I think that allowing new people to come in and not feel intimidated by people that have been sitting in brick and mortar for twenty years. I mean, we have some, a lot of history there. And I have heard from numerous people that have attended over the last few years that they don't even want to attend the rail committee meetings because they feel very intimidated by the people who are in the room, that I would say have a tendency of getting locked in on a personal position or something to that effect and may not be willing to hear what members of the public, as we heard recently, you know, ten-plus members referenced the station issue. And it seemed that the majority of the rail committee didn't even listen to them and nor did any one of the rail committee members. And I think that, I hate to say that, I, I wouldn't want the rail committee to be an institution of a certain direction because then we're not willing to listen to our residents and that's what we're here for. And I think transition in that committee would allow a little bit more willingness to listen to opposing opinions. So.
Through the mayor, I just would like to just respond that the committee is just a recommending body. And so their recommendations do come to council for consideration and deliberation and public comments can be made on those recommendations. And if there's public sentiment and council sentiment that we're going to go against the recommendation of, say, the majority of the members because of their preferences for history rather than maybe current events, current situation and vision, then I think we do have that ability to override and make a, a better decision if we feel the recommendation is going down the wrong track.
My, my thought is generally, if I can, generally, if these committees have terms, it's because, or, or as a town, we think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And I don't see anything fundamentally different about the rail committee. So if we're going to have terms, it seems like that's, we ought to regularize that and that. At the same time, we don't need to kick everybody out immediately. And maybe what you do is you start a clock now or something so that, you know, there's a, there's a clock coming. Because I, I think Elizabeth, these people put a lot of time and effort into this committee and it should be respected for and everything else. But I do think that the better governance practices, have a term because you have a chance to take a deep breath, see if you, you as a committee member still want to do it and whether, you know, if there's vacancies pop up, we have a way for them. That'd be my thought. If I could say that more overarchingly in terms of these committees, I'm working with a lot of people who want to serve on some of these committees. And I hope that whatever, if we stagger these terms, we do it in such a way that we minimize the number of new openings that come up each year rather than have them clump up or suddenly there's a whole bunch that come in one year because it'd be embarrassing to have a whole bunch of vacancies we couldn't fill. Whereas if we had, I don't know, if we could do it mathematically, but if we could do, you know, a couple a, a year, that'd be much easier than none one year and five the next or ten the next.
You could, you could start it the way you do, this comes from just being a corporate lawyer, when you have a regular board that's getting elected every year and you decide to go a staggered board where people have three-year terms, but you want them staggered. So when you implement it, that's when you say, you draw names out of the hat and they say, okay, you have a, have a one-year term, you have a two-year, you have a three-year, and then everybody gets on, or four-year for us, then everybody gets on schedule. And that way you'd only, you could say three, three, two, and two go off each year and you would have a nice change. And if, if nobody, if nobody signs up, they can re-up, right? They can go, they can be re-elected.
That's exactly what's been done in other cities. So you're going.
Okay, so I brought up this issue for exactly this reason. There are fourteen committee positions coming up for reappointment this year. There are eleven coming up for reappointment next year. There are five coming up for reappointment in 2021 and there are two that are up for reappointment in 2022. And I think we should have a policy that, where we have a five-member committee, that it's one-one-one-two. And where we have a seven-member committee, that it's one-two-two-two. And that we never have three people on one committee that we have to appoint, which is, I think we're going to have a problem both this year and possibly next year. On, and, and I have a suggestion for how to do that, which is basically we set the terms and then who that applies to, we do, we do exactly what Ann suggested that, so let's just take an example. The, the most striking is the bike and pedestrian where all five positions on the committee come up for a reappointment this year. And if we just reappoint them, in four years, all five positions are going to come up for reappointment. So I think we should make one position a one-year seat, one position a two-year seat, one position a three-year seat, and one position, and two positions a four-year seat. And if those that are on the committee that re-up, they can, you know, I mean, I guess if, if the one-year seat, if we deem that to be the least desirable, some people might see it as the most desirable, but if we deem it to be the least desirable, we could give that to a new appointee. And those that are, you know, committed to the town and up for reappointment, they can pull out of a hat and we can figure out which is which. And I've done that analysis on every one of these committees, with, with the exception of planning because it, I mean, I actually did the analysis on planning, but it's, it's a different animal. And some committees like EPC, there's really not that much of a problem. This year, there are three positions that come up, but we could make one of those positions, and there's no one for that committee coming up next year. We could make one of those three positions a one-year position and then we would have a one-one-one-two arrangement. And I've got that for every, every committee, what we need to do to affect that. So I'd like to see that happen. With respect to rail, I agree with what Mike said. I think that if we have a term limit policy, we ought to apply it to all of the committees. And if we're saying that you can only be on the committee for two full-year term, two full four-year terms in a row and we set up that committee with term arrangements, then there's some people that, it would take a while before they'd have their two full four-year terms. But I think that's the right thing to do.
I have a question. I think that we, you know, like in some of our regional committees and boards, if you are, you're a no-show, a certain number of meetings in a row, you can be asked to be removed from that committee.
That's senior policy.
Yeah.
But we don't do it because there's a member of the audit committee that literally, I think I've seen maybe once in almost two years. And I resent having someone who's holding that position and can't take the time to come to the meetings, which means sometimes, we usually get a quorum, but that's because the rest of us are pretty dedicated. But it shouldn't be that way. We should have somebody who's going to come to the meetings.
And I think the chair needs to tell Teresa to generate a letter to them that says that you haven't been at the meeting, so you're effectively terminated or something. I don't, I don't think she can do it, but the city council can do it.
Mike, Mike.
You appointed.
The first thing, you pick up the phone and call, call this person and say, hey, you haven't been coming, either quit the committee or start up the police.
Might I, might I, might I make the suggestion, one, it should be regulated through staff and excused absences, which people that do take the courtesy to actually make the call, I'm very familiar with the same scenario and it's happened and it's in a lot of our committees. If we have a continual, it should be at a staff level, two, two unexcused absences. It automatically triggers.
I think that's the policy.
It is.
Well, but my question, okay, so when I joined the committee, I was told we usually meet on Tuesdays every two months at two PM, okay? Is that a problem? No, it's not. Well, apparently it is a problem for this person because they never come, but they get excused because they, I guess they tell the law, sorry, I can't make it. It's like, okay, that, that, that might be okay for one or two a year, but not for eight.
Not for the entire.
For six.
But I think, if I, if I said, I think that.
So we're reading the exact language here.
No, I can read it.
I will.
Unexcused absences of members other than city council members from two or more consecutively scheduled meetings shall result in the automatic vacation of the members' offices.
But see, that says unexcused.
That's unexcused, that's the problem.
Excuse, well, it just means you send an email, sorry, I can't make it this month and that, apparently that.
No, we've got to have a reason for it.
So we, we need to change that.
We need to clean that up.
Get out of here.
And then it says the staff person assigned to the committee shall work with the chairperson to alert the city clerk of consecutive absences.
Yeah.
Who shall then work with the city manager.
Today, there was unexcused absences.
I don't think we ever, my sense is the, it's never actually been kicked off as soon as they miss two unexcused and we've always kind of worked with it. Also, clarifying point, I don't think council members are members of committees, so it's a little confusing.
They're not voting members.
They're not voting members.
But I asked.
Right.
So.
But they're liaisons, I suppose.
Liaisons aren't members.
Correct.
Yeah, liaisons are not.
They're not technically members of the committee.
Right, correct.
Okay, so we've got, we've got two things to talk about right now and there's more to come, okay? But I, I'd like to weigh in on a couple of things. First off, I, I agree with making sure that we're not having all four or five or six members all come up for reappointment at the same time. First off, that, that is detrimental to that body because there, there could be a loss of all the institutional knowledge of what they've been working on and they're starting afresh if they all decide to, to leave. And so I, and I think that that institutional knowledge on probably all these committees. And so I, and I think that that institutional knowledge on probably all these committees, but I could call out specifically, for example, the audit and finance committee. It takes about a year, really, for somebody coming in fresh to understand what we're doing. And so having a one-year appointment, I think, is worthless. I think that the appointments should be two and four, okay? That way we're, and so the first year, when somebody gets reappointed, some of, if they're all four, like on the bike ped, some of them get a two-year appointment, some of them get a four-year reappointment. And then after that, they're all on a four-year term, but they're rotating, just like we do here on the council. Some years, two of us stand for reelection, other years, three of us stand for reelection. But in the meantime, we have some consistency, so we can actually get projects done or get initiatives done and research over a period of time. If you keep having to re-educate somebody, I think that every year you got a new person, it, it's a problem. I, so I, that, that was, that's my comment with regards to that. I think that the rail committee, I've also served on the rail committee, and, and I, and I agree with what Carrie said, that, and I've observed it personally, you know, you have a differing opinion with one of the, the executive people that have been there for a long period of time. They're very knowledgeable and it's great, and they can still serve on the committee, but, but I think that part of the problem is, is that they do, they don't get shouted down, but then you get a history lesson. And, and so I think that we should have a term limit where we're going to term people out, but it should be, we're going to initiate terms and, you know, and we're going to push it out for several years before we do it, you know, so they know it's coming. And then they, we get our, our affairs in order and things like that, so to speak. So I think whatever we're going to do, we can't just go tell people, by the way, yeah, you're, you're, you were sworn in and you're going to serve until 2022, but we've decided to change it and your term is now one. We have to implement the stuff as their terms are, are expiring. Or in the case of like the rail and the CCAC, if it continues on, you know, we'll say, okay, in four years or whenever, we're going to start changing this.
Bill, can I ask a question of you, which is, you, you preface it as two or four. I actually liked Rick's more, you know, smooth it out over time. Do you have, assuming you can solve the situation of somebody only being on for one year, which I think we can solve for, would you object if it was spread out over, you know, if it was somebody one year, two year, three year, four years, for the initial terms, you know, subsequently be four years at a time?
Well, I think, you know, it's like, like I mentioned, planning and finance. I mean, I even heard it from one of the committees. It, it's, it's difficult for them to become productive in one year.
But it, it's not relevant because there's only two committees where there would be a one-year issue because so many are up this year. And those two committees are bike ped and EPC. Those are the only two where there might be a one, one position would be for one year, but to, to smooth it out to 1-1-1-2.
Yeah.
And I thought I heard you, Mayor, say that, that bike ped was staggered, but it's, it looks like they're all.
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I must have misunderstood.
Yeah, they're, they're all the same because we started the committee in 2015 and reappointed a bunch of people and, and we gave them all four-year terms. We probably should have done two and four.
Right, transportation also. There are four that are 2020.
Transportation, there are.
No, there's one.
There are four that are 2020, so you could make one of those a one-year and make one of them a two-year, you're right. But that would not, I wouldn't say that, I, I think what Bill said about having these changes occur only when the term is up is right. So for example, with transportation, I would propose that we make, that next year there are four positions that come up. I would say two of them should be four years, one of them should be one year, one of them should be two years.
Stagger.
And, but they, that won't go into effect until next year because that's when the terms are up.
Right.
But you've got also.
And then who, who gets to choose these terms?
Has to be done.
If there's a re-upping, I'd have them pull out of a hat.
It has to be done randomly. Has to be done randomly where you can.
Random, okay.
So what are you going to do with the vacancy that's there now? Is that going to be appointed to us?
That'd be a backfill.
But it would be appointed for how many?
Well, it comes up now, it'd be a four-year term and then it would expire in 2023.
Right.
Right.
That, that, that position's easy.
Okay, all right, okay, fine.
The other four are the problem. And you could leave two to be new four-year terms, but if you made one a one-year and one a two-year, then you would have completely worked out that.
And what are we going to do about the CCAC committee? Because essentially, it's going to, it's going to end. It's going to just dissolve.
Yeah, the council put them on hiatus for a while. And we've only been working with the project management subcommittee of that group moving forward.
Which is Clive.
And having a tension for a combat together.
If there is a significant design aesthetic change to the project, then yeah, it would go from the PMC to the CCAC to the city council.
So with DeeDee moving out, are you going to advertise for her place?
We would, we would need to if the council keeps the committee together. In fact, there is a vacancy still on there, comply.
With Clive, yeah, which isn't indicated here. But Clive is serving as.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc on the PMC.
It, it sounds like you could distinguish that one because that really is a special purpose ad hoc committee, whereas these others are intended to be standing committees.
Yeah, and I might suggest that we don't backfill at all.
That's what I would suggest.
If people fall off at this point, I think we've gotten to a point where we trust who's left because reschooling somebody or bringing somebody else in might not help the dynamics.
I think that's right.
So we've talked about the staggering idea. So we're back to, I think, kind of two items. The staggering idea and then the discussion, further discussion on the rail committee. Term or not term.
One other specific smaller item, I think on the park and rec, we have a Friends representative, right? Who's, that organization there be.
There, yeah, so when I did my analysis, I didn't count the foundation appointee and the Friends appointee because they're both kind of unusual. But you're right, that Friends is going away and what we do.
And so hers is up this year.
The problem is we can't talk about it because our only thing on the agenda is term links.
That's a term link, term link.
No, if, if, if you're talking about replacing them with something, whatever you replace them with, however you do it, is a new, is a new position.
Well, when we look at appointing and we look at the resolution, we can eliminate that position.
Right, you can do anything you want. You can do anything you want.
Or I would suggest that we do the Friends with a term limit of zero.
There you go.
This is like the funniest.
It's a compliance.
Okay.
Well, I could make a proposal if you want.
On the staggering?
Yeah, on the staggering.
Let's do that, get that out of the way.
In, in, in Mike's concept, I have a staggering proposal. Okay, here's my proposal, starting from the top. For audit and finance, there are two positions that come up next year. One of those two positions should be made a three-year position. That would be a one-time three-year position. And I, I love the idea of choosing who and, and not just doing this in terms of the positions, not just, not allocating them to the committee members. That can be done at the time that it's chosen and some random method works. For bike and ped, that all of these positions are up this year, we make one of them a one-year, one of them a two-year, one of them a three-year and two of them four-years.
There might be a fight for the one-year.
There might be. For the EPC, there are.
That's so random.
I know.
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
I know that.
There, for EPC, there are three positions up this year and we make one of those a one-year. For.
Well, then the other ones will all be four.
No, the other ones, if you look at them, two, the other two will be four, but then you have one coming up in two years and one coming up in three years. So then you'd absolutely balance that out, 1-1-1-2.
So the other, I'm sorry, 1-1-2?
For, no, the proposal for EPC is one of the three positions that is up for reappointment this year, be made a one-year. That's all that we have to do on EPC.
I have a, I have a comment about that because I thought we expanded the membership and it's not indicated on there.
We didn't.
There was no motion for the EPC yet. They keep postponing that item.
That has not been done.
We're dealing with.
So on park and rec, I'm only looking at the five positions. I'm not addressing foundation or Friends. Of the other five, there are three positions up for reappointment this year. And if we made one of those a three-year appointment, then that would deal with those five positions, 1-1-1-2.
So you got a vacancy for 2020.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a Friends appointment, so.
That would be eliminated when we discuss.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
It is, it's a foundation.
That's wrong. Your, your, your information is wrong.
That's old.
I have an old chart.
You have an old chart?
There's a new one on your.
There's a new one that was handed out with your handout.
Teresa was very efficient.
She emailed out earlier.
Okay.
No problem.
It's the Friends position because Alicia moved, so.
Well, the Friends are disbanding and just going to the foundation.
So we could accept an amendment for a zero term.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. For, I'm not dealing with planning, but you would fix planning if you made one of the two positions that are up for reappointment next year to be a two-year appointment. But I think that's a different issue.
They're staggered, all right. They're staggered.
Yeah, it's 2-2-1.
Yeah, I think I do.
So it's okay, I, I, I don't really care. I'm not addressing it. For, for transportation, we would fix it, but there are four positions that come up next year and it would be fixed if one of those was a four-year position and one of them was a one-year position.
All right. One four, one one?
Wait, excuse me, if one of them was a two-year position and one was a one-year position.
Right.
And the other two.
There are four that come up next year.
There are two or four.
So there'd be two fours, one two and one one.
So that was the proposal. Are we okay with that, council, or do you want to vote?
Did you just write?
I didn't address.
No, we're going to rail as a separate.
But I'd say if we were doing rail, there's 10 positions, you know, you could make.
Well, let's discuss rail separately.
Okay, yeah, I think that's good.
Because I think we might have a conflict on that. So are we okay with what Rick has proposed? That makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me as well.
You're staggered, okay.
Staggered it is.
All right, here we are. So we have a decision on that.
Direction, I'd like to come back to you during our appointment period.
And when we do that, if we could have the staff report, allow us to make a comment with regards to the Friends appointment.
Sure, that's part of, part of amending the resolution.
Part of the redesign.
All right, so then the discussion was on the rail, okay? The fact that there are no appointments, there's a discussion and there've been two comments at least about, we don't want to, we'd have to do something where we'd set something in advance if we were to make any changes. So we don't just say, hey, look, we, we're making a change, so. Do we want to, somebody want to make a discussion? Or do we want to take, if there is a rail committee person here and we wanted to, have to open up and have rail comments?
Couldn't comment for the committee just himself.
Yeah.
Because they have one idea. Do we want to refer it to them? It's a big change.
Might I make the suggestion, since I'm the representative, to throw this particular topic to them and maybe suggesting, you know, a cat and a hat, you know, do a roulette and everybody, see if they are amenable to something like that in terms based on that, similar to staggering in all fairness. Because I think most of them would most likely re-up.
Have to come up with an idea.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think that, I think we need to decide today that we want to put, we're going to put terms on the rail committee, all right? So what are you going to discuss? If the council is thinking about it? And they'll say, no, we don't want it.
I think that discussing term limits, very similar to the staggering approach, would be, you know, and then.
You'd be discussing how.
Yeah, and discussing how. I mean, that's.
Right, I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so the fact that there will be term limits and we like their recommendation, but we would need to have it quickly so that we can, when we address it again.
Yes.
We would have final deliberation.
And focusing how everything else went staggered.
Well, when, when is their next meeting?
I think the decisions are going to be staggered, as to how they'd like to do it.
How would they like to do it? Cat, cat and a hat.
Just to make sure we're clear here, so there's a difference between a term and term limits.
Correct.
The term is four years and as I understand it, most of the committees have a, a term limit of two four-year terms, right?
Of two full four-year terms, so if someone got appointed for a, to fill a term, they could actually be on the committee for more than eight years.
Right, that's, that's clearly the same. I just want to make sure because people are using both, both terms.
Well, we're going to have terms and we're going to have term limits.
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to have both terms and term limits on the rail committee unless.
Right.
Okay, all right, okay. Any further comments on that? It's 5:07.
Ooh, good job.
Okay, okay, so let's go back to item number three, where we've got eight additional minutes of discussion.
So did you open it up to anybody you wanted to speak?
Yes, I did. There's been no one wanting to speak.
Sorry, I was.
Okay.
All right, item number three, Mr. Ray, members of council, is the general fund operational budget overview. Robert has prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. He'll go through that rather quickly, unless there's a lot of Q and A to it. It's about 32 pages. I did provide some basic feedback questions. One of the things I, I missed was the mileage I put in there about the motorcycles is incorrect. The chief's got the correct mileage of those. It's higher than what I put in the stack report.
We need more motorcycles.
The new ones are really nice. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert to give the bulk of the presentation.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Jerome, important.
Okay, correct, we're talking about the general funds, the primary funded of the town. Our revenues and receipts that are not allocated by law are, or contract are extended out here or accounted for here. We're going to discuss the operations, make sure that admin, finance, planning, building, both work safely. Our revenue assumptions for this budget was property taxes were at 4.5%. Building revenue is projected at 1%, franchise, franchise revenue is at 2% to 4% and other services were held at 1% while we're evaluating on current trends and revenues.
So the question, when you do these revenue assumptions, what do you have to do about current trends? How recent is it? What do you track? What, what numbers do you base it on?
I just, I see what we did last fiscal year and then I see what's, what's coming up during this fiscal year, how we're going to end. So that's, I use this previous fiscal year and mainly current. See where we're at with current to, to budget accordingly.
You're asking about building permits and particular construction efforts in town?
Yeah, just general, property tax, everything, everything that comes in.
Right, property taxes is, is current as we, what we receive. The, the hard part is just by the time we get to the, the budget portion, it's just, we've pretty much already know some, and some of revenues what we have and some we don't. But I think if we look at last year's and we kind of look at the current year, it kind of gives us, that's what gives us a good.
But you've got HCL.
Yeah, I was just going, I was just saying, so what, that was an HCL. How, what has been their estimates and the presentation to the finance committee?
From four to anywhere between four to 7%. I think in this past year, it was about four to 6%. We use four and a half. We think that in the next couple of years, it should start to level out on the property taxes. So, so this year we use 4.5. The previous years we used 5% and four and a half percent. So we're just trying to kind of.
If I can stir up here, if you don't mind, how accurate have you hit on projections at this point? We've been conservative?
We've been conservative, fairly conservative.
And how far off have we been standing, buddy?
Well.
That's my question. I mean, that's the issue.
Exactly.
Because now it matters because we've got, now it's.
On the property taxes last year, from 16, 17, 17, 18, we had an increase of about 8%. So we budgeted four and a half, back 5% last year. So we had a 3% increase in property taxes.
Over what we budgeted?
Right.
Yeah.
So. So, um.
Actually, the total dollars, let's add three percent.
So it was probably about nine, I think, can I show you? Or so, from the previous years, um.
Yeah, right there.
But I think as a corollary to what Mike is asking, as we go down the road and we decide, hey, you know, we're gonna have a cash flow, um, a cash flow issue, deficit. Um, what we would like to do is make sure that we have, uh, a better projection, not a, you know, conservative projection on, on revenues and a, and then a, a strong, you know, top-level expenditure projection like we do, um, and, you know, make sure we're throwing in the kitchen sink, like some of the things that, you know, George brought up with regards to penalty fees and things like that. Accurately, as, you know, don't go out on a limb, but we want to be more accurate at that time, so we know exactly what the cash flow situation really is expected to be. And if H D L says it's six percent, then we go with six percent, or if it's four to six, then we go with five, not four and a half. But that's for that, not for this, okay? Um, and so that's, that's, you know, if we're getting ready to borrow money, which are people that are skittish about that in the community, then we want to make sure that we actually need every penny that we need, right?
Correct, and, and when we do that, when we work with the underwriter, when we look with our, our finance team, our fiscal consultant, we look at that, we look at the trends, we look at the property taxes, they're gonna go and look at where their top forty, um, property tax owners are, we'll look into that, they'll see the history of what we've done in previous years, and then also they'll go with what H D L projects. Yeah, I mean, we, we could go whatever, we could go the top end of the production or.
But I, I think there's a distinction being made here between what we budget for,
Right.
and how we budget versus what we do on our cash flow analysis when we look at the C O P.
Yeah.
I don't think the council's projecting, let's budget aggressively for revenues from a budgeting perspective. I think what they're saying is, when we look at cash flow, let's be realistic in what those expectations are, so we don't have to borrow.
It's not just the revenues, Robert, it's also the expenditures, so like I brought up at the last meeting, you know, in the previous years, we were doing, we were two million dollars below where we're projecting. And so there's reasons that we're projecting at a higher level, and then if we don't make that, you know, obviously each year we kind of come back down to this number or somewhere close to it, the twelve million versus the fourteen million. If you remember, I brought that up in the last meeting, so when we're doing that, let's just, you know, we want to be as, as close to on as possible, you know, and then we'll, then we, as a council, will decide, how much additional pushing do we think we need to have for the unexpected unexpecteds, right? So that's, you know, that's my comment, so this, but this is just for the budget, which is.
Right, just for this budget, uh, four and a half, I, I think in my previous staff report, when we discussed the forecast, I think H D L, again, I think was between four and six percent, or they're like, I ended. Or four or five percent, and we chose the middle four point five percent, um, rather than the top on the property taxes. Um, we'll look at that again and, and come back, um, in our next study session and see if we can form up those numbers, property taxes.
Well, I'm not sure that's what's actually suggested.
That's, no, I, 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 I think it's simply this, when we're ready to make a decision related to certificates of participation,
Right.
we want to be as close to where we want to do, and create whatever buffer, we don't want you to create the buffer for us, let us do that.
Okay.
It'll be spotless, but you're gonna, when you do, when you're doing this,
Yeah.
you may know that a fraction of a percent, because maybe we've already got the first installment.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
At this rate, we're not gonna get to page six.
Look, it's this quarter after now.
I know, but let's just stay on track here, because what we're talking about is the budget, and what this conversation is about is about something else. It's not the budget, so we just spent ten minutes talking about something that's not just, uh, uh, applying to the budget.
Well, I think, to council members.
So I think we should stay on track.
To council members.
Go ahead.
So then, uh, major expenditures, workers' compensation, every reserve, a hundred and ten thousand towards that allocation. O P E B R, it's within the, um, department budgets, two hundred and five thousand towards the, the normal cost that we, for their O P E B liabilities. Uh, Calpers U I L, it's estimated at one million sixty-seven thousand in this fiscal year. So on this next page, this shows you what our U I L payments have been over since fifteen, sixteen, when we started paying them, um, at four and forty-two thousand, and the U I L payment in fiscal year nineteen twenty is at one million seventy-six thousand. Uh, I just want to let you know, miscellaneous employee rate is, went up to ten point three two seven percent, that's up point six nine percent of our current year, public safety went up to twenty-three point six five percent, that's one point three percent higher than our current year.
But that's not the right, that's not real, right? I mean, for us, it's nine point three two seven.
The town, yes. Yes, correct.
So.
I'm just, well, that's, that's the rate that we currently pay, that, that Calpers has, but because we did the cost sharing, just letting the one percent, this is just for, for illustration purposes, it's nine point three percent, and twenty point six percent.
Wait, are we, are we paying ten point three two seven, or are we paying?
We're paying nine point three.
Then why do we even report the ten?
Because that's what our current rate that council is showing.
Yes, we're, that's our contractual rate.
Right, it's just for illustration, just showing you what our rates are, but because of this cost sharing, what they would be.
But out of our budget of sixteen million, a million seventy-six is our U I L payment this year?
Yes, sir. And it's, it's, it's.
Not a great percentage, but that's higher than I'd like, yeah.
Well, because they, they went up.
So they can readjust.
Well, and, and too, and this nineteen twenty U I L, i- it's now at that seven percent, it's assuming the seven percent discount rate, as you're aware, over the years, they've been reducing that discount rate, so now the U I L payment's reflective of that.
And, and remember, the, the U I L payment is not the ten point three two seven and the twenty-three point six five four. Those percentages are the employer rate for a pension obligation, the U I L is an entirely separate unfunded actuarial liability that the town is trying to reduce, and Calpers has changed their discount rate to force local agencies to pay larger numbers to reduce those.
And that's why, yeah, and that's why you see the, the increase in the U I L.
Just notice that the U I L payment amount has doubled in three years, and I think we can reasonably expect it to double from where it is now in the next three years.
Yep.
It will be.
Yeah, or more, or more.
It'll be two million a year, or more.
And, and on that, we, we review that with the finance committee, we should, we, we kind of do the, um, forecast on how the U I L comes to be next couple of years. So just to talk about the general fund revenues to expenditures, this is just without E R A F component, so for nineteen twenty, we propose, uh, expect sixteen point five million revenues to fourteen point six million in expenditures, and that would produce a one point eight million net, net, um, increase to the general fund. This slide includes the E R A F, so, um, it increased to seventeen point eight million. The E R A F is, um, for fiscal year nineteen twenty, is budgeted at one point two million, so that seventeen point eight million includes the E R A F to expenditure the fourteen point six million. Again, the net, um, increase is three point one million to the general fund. Next slide, uh, includes all our E R A F and fund transfers, uh, so that's, uh, what's different on this is what shows the hundred and ten thousand towards the O P E B, uh, payment, um, the net overall. Yes, the workers' comp thing, uh, the net, um, to this, to the general fund with, with E R A F and general fund reserves to our expenditures and transfers out is three million thirty-five thousand. So those are the major revenues. Again, so property taxes is a big component of the general, of the general fund, so this slide includes the E R A F and the general fund revenues. So, um, you can see the historic, uh, from sixteen seventeen, we had the actual ten point six million in property taxes and E R A F. Of that ten point six million, one million one hundred was E R A F, although eleven point six million, um, one point two million in fiscal year seventeen eighteen was E R A F.
Can I ask a question of, of staff? We're spending a lot of time on revenue, and we already had a study session on revenue. The, the studies, this item here, number three, was about the expenditures.
It was revenue and expenditures.
On the operational fund. Whoa, whoa, the majority of the, of the report is, is the expenditures. We spent this last study session going, unless I slept through it, I thought we talked about revenues, that's the last.
That last year's, uh, was a forecasting tool.
Yeah, that's five years.
Right.
Cause we looked at all the different funds and how they were gonna grow, and we did, you know, and, okay, I'm just trying to move us.
I agree, Bill, it'd be nice to sort of zip through the revenue.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, franchise, I was skipping through the E R A F, if you want to see the E R A F. We're projecting at one point two million, we're receiving one point six million this year in E R A F. Um, again, we budgeted a million twenty-five thousand for E R A F. Um, franchise fees, you can see they're relatively static, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand for a budget in nineteen twenty. Building fees, uh, projecting one point eight million, slightly lower than the current year, one point nine million. It's just, um, where we're currently at, we increased that one percent, and we'll be just, uh, where we're at right now, building permits.
It's a projection based on the building officials, number of permits in the pipeline going forward is where we come up with that number.
We're down a little bit.
Yeah.
We're down a little bit, and I have a feeling too, in discussing, it's, it's just where we're at right now with the weather, a lot of rain, the season, and a lot of it's seasonal, correct, so starting April, May, June, that's when a lot of building permits start to pick up, so hopefully we'll see more of that.
Fewest in the last couple of months.
And we do an adjustment at mid-year.
Right, for that.
For that.
Uh, public works, just real quick, public works revenue, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, um, the majority of that is the encroachment permits. Um, and so of that, four hundred and fifty-nine, four hundred and twenty-three thousand is, is the encroachment permit component. Um, miscellaneous revenues, real quick, um, that's just the, most of it is, we're projecting at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Um, we see at, uh, six hundred and eight, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand right now in miscellaneous revenues, because we had a big, um, increase, uh, at mid-year, and a lot of that was the, I'm sorry. A lot of that was because of the, um, C T L.
The what?
Construction time limit.
Construction time limits, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand in miscellaneous revenues.
That's fees for people that have gone beyond twenty-four months?
That's twenty-four or thirty-six months, twenty-four or thirty-six.
Right. Depending on.
Square footage improvement.
You might want to visit that and visit.
Thirty-six, it's four thousand square feet. Yeah.
Quote, quote, sorry, at the three-year mortgage.
Oh, if it's four thousand square foot, they get three years?
Yeah.
So majority, that's where you, if, if the nineteen twenty budget, there's a big drop because the majority of that, at mid-year, we had, uh, three hundred and twenty-four thousand in C T L, um, that we received, um, after.
And C T L is bound revenue, so to speak, because it's appealable, and it's got, that, it's not, you're not gonna get the full amount, do the rain and other things, for the contractor, he can appeal it with a homeowner, so it's not a guarantee that we're gonna get it.
And, and it's how much a month?
It's, it's in phases based on how many days they've gone beyond, so it's two hundred dollars per day for the first, you know, thirty, or thirty-one to sixty days, sixty to a hundred and twenty, it's four hundred dollars a day, a hundred and twenty beyond, it's a thousand dollars a day, up to a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand or penalty.
So, is that something we can revisit?
Yes.
Isn't it on the agenda revisit?
No.
I thought you and I talked.
We.
We put it in council.
Can, I put it in the council, we have the council.
So can we put that on an agenda where you give us the detailed information?
Why don't we go over and look at our fees?
Yes.
That's the appropriate time.
Great.
When we look at our fees at mid-year, that's the appropriate time to adjust those, because some of the houses are already at two fifty and they're still.
Under construction.
Under construction, to the irritation of their neighbors.
Yeah, maybe it should be at five hundred, but I think we should. So, we're looking at the fees, is that something we do in the course of the budget process here?
Usually in June, we have a, a similar fee conversation.
Perfect.
Now to, uh, mayors, on request.
Finally.
Oh.
Still.
All right, this first slide, the general fund expenditures, this includes the general administration, um, which includes, uh, city council, administration, and attorney.
Boy, I gotta tell you, you gotta stop the variation here, this is just all over the board.
Yeah, so we're at one million eighty-seven thousand in, in protection in nineteen twenty.
Is that gonna be our salary?
Yes, salary, you need to say.
We're dying.
We're doubling your salary this week, isn't it?
No, this is, this is administrative.
Well, it's both, administration, city council, attorney.
City council.
Where, actually, you cut our salary, how is that possible? That's why, how did you do that?
I thought they should.
You did, we decreased, well, of that, some of the reason why it has been relative is, uh, there was a decrease of twenty-four thousand in the council budget. Majority of that election expense of thirty thousand, there's no general election, um, this year, and we don't anticipate a, a special election. We don't have one on right now, so we're budgeting thirty thousand less. Uh, furnishings, there's an increase of five thousand as we relocate to the park for, for meetings and that such, so there's a slight increase in, in, um, the furnishings expense for, for the, for the apartment.
Can we talk about, um, possibly, uh, increasing, or getting another little budget item here to decorate the trailers? Like the graphics or something else? Did you swallow some?
Ah, you just, frog.
Frog.
Or that would be a, a different, uh, time?
Different time. Yes, it's on the agenda.
All right, I'm fine.
See how that works?
I'm fine. I asked, I asked, please.
Administration, the expense increased by thirty-four thousand, um, there's a U I L payment increase, uh, in the department, it's about ten thousand dollars. Um, again, the U I L is just allocated, uh, throughout all the departments, um, in, in the budget. There's a projected salary benefits adjustment, there's a, a four percent placeholder in there, there's an increase in Calpers miscellaneous contribution rate, um, as we discussed earlier, it won't be ten point three, it's nine point three percent. There's some increases in conferences and training, about seventeen hundred, and a slight increase in, in, uh, equipment maintenance and repairs.
But if it's, so, maybe it's just not being presented clearly, but if, if the change, if the net change in the Calpers contribution rate is nine point three two seven, then it's a decrease.
Correct. It, it's a decrease, and, and, and the budget, it is at nine point three two seven percent. Again, this is just, this is just showing you what the rates are, based on what Calpers says our rates are, but with the new cost allocation, the rate, our rate is reduced by one percent, the employee picks up the.
Right, but since, so we're looking at our expenses for our budget, I think it might be worthwhile for you just to show us what is coming out of the C budget, not the, not the employee's budget.
This, this isn't the employee's budget, this is the C.
No, well, I understand, but you keep talking about the ten percent on miscellaneous, and it's really nine point six.
It's actually nine point three.
Okay, so that's to be, it's down there, it's nine, it's, okay?
It's in there, it's in the staff report as well, the nine, it's actually the nine point three percent.
Yeah, but this is, it causes confusion, I think.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a note on my little chart.
Something to question, Robert, or, or Mike, what should we spend on conferences and training?
Um, in the budget, there's, I think it was about eight thousand?
Total police officers there?
Oh, are you, in general?
Yeah.
Um, it's probably, it's higher than that. Um, police officers and training, they have a budget of about thirty thousand. It's for post-training, but that's, that's reimbursed.
There's three or four guys on travel down to L A each month.
Or that, a museum of tolerance is a required training under a post, post.
But I think that the question was, how much do we spend on training, police?
The budget's about, about thirty thousand in the budget. And it's, and it's for post-training, we, we get reimbursed.
Who's getting a, a number, I was curious, it does, I, I agree with what Bill said, it seems low, it, it does feel like you've spent a lot. And I'm not questioning it, please, it just, it seems like it's probably a relatively big amount.
And when, if they're, and if they're traveling for training, then it would be good to see that that cost is kind of combined. So when you're traveling for training, you know, the cost of the training was the cost of getting there, staying there, and then taking the training class, so there was a registration fee of five thousand dollars, but we spent three thousand dollars on getting there and getting them home and housing and giving them food, or her, the cost of that training was eight thousand dollars.
So there is conferences, conferences are budgeted at five thousand, and this is just the police department budget. Training and workshop is fifteen thousand. Post-training, which is all reimbursed to the town, uh, is forty thousand. We have the budget for it even though it's reimbursed, cause the revenue comes from the other side.
The travel.
Uh, that's all part of it.
That's all in there.
When we, when we book the training.
Just a little note, and not only police, but sort of all.
Got it.
Yes. Good, thank you. Finance department.
Finance department, um, our post-budgets nineteen, uh, for nineteen twenty, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. Um, our current budget is at seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, the increases are due to, um, there's a fifty-three thousand increase in the department, U-A-L payment increase by six thousand dollars. Projected salary and benefits adjustment placeholder increase in there. Um, there's, uh, of that, fifty-three thousand, about fifty-one thousand is the salary and benefits component. Uh, there's an increase in active health insurance, retiree O-P-E-B, and that is about.
Sorry, fifty-one thousand of the fifty-three is salary and benefits?
Yes.
That's the four percent of the U-A-L payment as well.
That's that is the U-A-L payment.
Pardon me?
How many people?
Three.
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 Uh, and just a note on that ten point three-two-seven, the town pays ten point three-two-seven. The employees reimburse the one percent. So, we are actually paying, and we have the budget for it, ten point three-two-seven.
It has to be shown on the financial statements?
Yes.
Money going out, money coming in.
Was it ever, it, it, was it shown in the revenue, money coming in?
It was, it was our expense.
It's an expense, yeah.
But, in, in this, this is the rate that we have, what we paid, but because we did the adjustment to the contract, it's nine point three percent.
So, is the one percent in miscellaneous income number somewhere?
The balance.
It, it, currently it is, but until we, we did this, um, the changes in the amendment of the contract, now it's all going, um, we won't have that anymore. Because now the rate changed for Calpers. So, when we get our actual report, it says ten point three percent. But because our contract has changed, Calpers knows that we're only paying nine point three percent.
They'll, they'll adjust that contract, and then it'll reflect exactly as.
Then we have to show it in revenue. Either show it at the lower number, or we have to have it saying we're expending it, and they're paying us back, then we need to have a revenue number, which is the adjustment.
By the start of the fiscal year, they'll figure that out.
Right, it'll be all in expense.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
So, just, just to, sorry to go back, but just to be clear, on the finance department, there's been an increase of fifty-three thousand five hundred. Fifty-one thousand of that is salary and benefits for three people.
Correct.
Part of that, not salary and benefits, it's the U-A-L thing that also went up within that department.
Right. So, of that fifty-one, about thirty-one thousand is just, is just salaries. The remaining part is the U-A-L component that went up. Um, and then everything else is in relation, uh, workers' comp goes up, uh, health, health and, uh, health insurance.
So, the big net is thirty-one thousand salary increase.
Which is that four percent?
Is that, thirty-one thousand, is that four percent?
It's the four percent of that one position, one position change, which is debit.
Yeah. And then, uh, within the department, there's other contract service expenditures, slight increase, the majority of it's chaotic, um, uh, expense, about fourteen hundred increase. There's minor increases in banking costs, about three hundred, computer equipment, software, and conferences, with about five hundred, um, increase went up. So, planning and building, this is, uh, both the planning department and the building department. The one point six million is what we're budgeting for nineteen twenty. Uh, of that, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand is the planning department, one million three-eight-five is the building department.
As are the people that are involved.
Yes, oh, eh, eh, correct. In planning, uh, there's a, the majority of the increase in planning was, there was a five percent cola increase in contract planner expense. So, that's about seventeen thousand four fifty-three.
Five percent cola?
We haven't had an adjustment in the planning contract in several years. Yeah, and I'll be talking to Lisa about what that actually ends up being, but we're got five percent in there for the next year.
Yeah, that's it's five.
But we end up with a net, uh, decrease.
Correct.
Yeah.
Building department increased at fifty-nine thousand. Again, this salary and benefits increase is a four percent placeholder, uh, of that, fourth, it's about fourteen thousand. There's an increase in active health insurance, retiree, um, expense that increased in the department. That's about ten thousand. Uh, the U-A-L payment increased, and that was thirteen thousand.
But the decrease is only because we understated potentially due to the weather and the number of permits that are out there, cause it's a revenue share.
But the, eh, exactly, the big decrease in the department is the seventy-five thousand of building expense. Because we redu- we reduced the budget expectation for the building revenue, so it's, we adjusted it in there. Uh, next department is the inner department, um, major fiscal changes is, uh, about fifty-three thousand. And here we pay our, our general liability, property liability, and also our I.T. contracted out of this account. Um, so our increase in general, uh, property liability insurance totaled about, uh, twelve thousand. And there is an increase in county tax administration expense to about ninety-eight thousand. Not ninety-eight thousand, but nineteen thousand from seventy-six thousand to ninety-eight thousand. Um, there is an increase in, in, uh, important town infrastructure, uh, needs, and that was about twenty-one thousand, and below is what those needs are. Um, I, I T. infrastructure.
Do our insurance payments go up or down as we're moving or destroying this, moving over there, building a new facility?
Well, the contractor assumes the liability for the new construction building, uh, as it's being constructed. I don't think there's any change.
So, we don't have fire insurance that we have to?
Yeah, we should. The contractor.
The contractor does.
Would cover that during construction.
But we're not insuring a building that we just took half of it out.
Right, although the P.D.'s still gotta be covered as a building, uh, the, um, temporary buildings over the park.
We're actually removing that building from our schedule of properties, and then we're adding the two new trailers. We're in the process of doing that right now.
So, on the trailers though, when we're leasing the trails, right?
Correct.
That doesn't include insurance by the owner of the trailer?
We have to insure, like, runner's insurance.
I would think that that would be included in our, right.
But every, but every year we go through the, the property, um, schedule with our insurance insurer, and, and, and they verify that. So, like Teresa said, we're gonna remove some properties.
The contract calls for us to provide insurance on our use of the buildings.
So, the, again, it's just new I.T. infrastructure, and most of it's relocation services to the park. It's not, it's a data server, data store, and short tow, um, transparency will increase, um, budget.
And as you know, we just changed over to office three sixty-five.
Yeah, we know that.
Yeah.
I think we've learned that.
We learned that, yeah. It saves unlicensing and things like that in the long term.
That doesn't have a missing message.
No.
So, next department is the public works department, um, the budget is projected in nineteen twenty, uh, to go to two point three million. Um, it's an increase of about a hundred and seventy-one thousand. So, and, um, salary and benefits increase because of the placeholder, uh, Calpers U-A-L payment, um, increased, that payment was twenty thousand, um, eight hundred. The salaries and benefits component, um, total is fifty-two thousand, so about thirty thousand. We back up the U-A-L component, which is the salary and benefits, um, workers' comp, uh, benefits earned. Other insurance is like health insurance. So, there's the increase in active and health, uh, retired health insurance in there. Overall, increase in operation expense is the increase in, uh, in contract W. maintenance. Uh, that's the, um, M.C.E. contract, it's about twenty-seven thousand. Contract custodial maintenance is an increase, uh, in budget, about seventeen thousand, as we're relocating also to the park. There might be some additional needs and cleaning out there. Uh, increase in facility repairs and maintenance expense, again, this is about, uh, thirty thousand to the, to the budget. And the reason for that is because of, like we're seeing, we don't know, as we move over to the park, that there's gonna be some facility repairs and maintenance, um, as we get situated out there. Again, does not mean that we're gonna spend it all, just means, just in case if there's something, minor repairs and upgrade. And also it's for grounds, elevator, roof, H-back, new house. Also, there's an increase in utilities, and that's about eight thousand. Five thousand of that is water, three thousand is about sewers. Again, that's just for, there's increased use at the park, and again, it will be out there as well, so, um, it's an increase of water.
Some people, sure. The trailers, uh, will have their own, uh, restrooms and facilities for the admin and everything? And then, but that gets, um, there's maintenance, I mean, the home comes and.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct. So, we will be using the main house and the pavilion far more than they're currently used now, so we just don't know what that impact's gonna be.
Are you putting a water line into the park, or you're just gonna run a hose from the chief's office?
Water, water line. Yeah, so there'd be two trench lines that come in front of it.
Loop walk-ins.
I think, I think hose is a good idea.
Yeah, so there's the park.
Might be a pressure issue.
You know, doing the L of it.
Right.
It's gonna be, it'd be interesting in, uh, same time. The renovation of the carriage house bathrooms, and path maintenance rehab is typically in the budget with a full work budget, not within the C.I.P. But the carriage house bathrooms, I think, was one of the recommendations from the department rep committee.
Well, make sure Elizabeth looks at it.
Make sure she picks out those tiles.
Robert's on vacation this week, so he'll get to that.
Okay, cause we want him looking great. And the right type of, uh, tile and everything.
Color choices.
I just wanna see what we're.
I want George to pick out the colors.
I'll pick out the color.
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 Shades of gray.
Shades of gray, yeah.
So, uh, on Department of Public Works, we increased the contract engineering from twenty-one thousand to a hundred thousand.
That's for.
What was that about?
That, that increase, um, we increased it in this current fiscal year budget. That's for if we have needs for, uh, outside contract engineer services, um, to come in and help us with projects. Before, we, we used to have a, eh, the contract with, uh, Interwest was as a contract public works render. So, we, we've decreased that component of it, this engineering, right.
With Interwest?
So, this engineer would help, but if we need to hire Interwest an engineer to help us with some project that comes up, this gives us, um, this budget is, is for that.
It's not a specific.
Kind of a swag, right?
Yeah, it's not a specific project. If, if, if the council says, hey, we wanna put a stop sign somewhere, we need a traffic engineer, that's where that service comes from.
And that's why we have that budget.
Roundabout or something?
Roundabout, yeah.
Uh, I have another question.
Or a stop line.
Or a stop line.
On the facilities repair and maintenance budget, more than doubled also.
Right, and that's because that went up, cause we don't know, um, the maintenance of the park when we move out there. That there's gonna be some additional, eh, changes or adding, um, again, roof repairs or H-back, anything that's, that's out there. Um, and again, if we, we move out in the trailers, if there's additional needs, um, that's just in there for, for facility repair and maintenance.
Would that also include any kind of, uh, uh, additional parking, swiping, or creating more parking along the, the road there?
Yeah, anything like that.
Yeah, that's gonna be a permanent thing.
Yeah.
While we're there temporarily, uh, where it's usually just for the Easter event.
Yes, yes.
So, that's gotta be maintained, that's what comes out.
Right, yeah, correct. Yeah, and again, this isn't something, we're not gonna, it's, if we're, um, it's.
There's a lot of unknowns.
Right.
You know, being at the park.
We don't know what type of tile we're gonna be putting in that.
Exactly.
Yes.
Or, or what type of, you know.
Could, could be fun, who knows?
Yeah, we're looking forward to.
We, we, we've also tripled our contract custodial services.
Correct.
That's based on the last. Is that because?
But because now.
Now, we, we have to clean the temporary buildings, but we don't have to clean the buildings that we had explained previously over here.
Yeah, we switched entire services, the council approved that contract last month.
From no dusting to dusting.
Yeah, and, and then again, that's too, also because of increased use at the park, like the little league field bathrooms, making sure, um, that we have enough in there for that, for, for cleaning. Um, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, but troubling it seems a little bit excessive.
Yeah.
That'd be true.
But that's like the type of thing that we were talking about when we're looking at the cash flow, we want that tightened up, okay?
Yeah, these are big numbers.
I mean, we also are building.
Most responsible business.
The budget just has increased significantly, with the building improvement went from four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven to a hundred and sixty thousand.
Well, right, of the hundred and sixty thousand, sixty thousand of that is the park path component, a hundred thousand of that is just what we discussed, the carriage house.
Park path improvements.
The part that you approved from the.
A hundred thousand for the carriage house.
Bathroom remodel, we don't, we don't know, we don't know what that's gonna be, we haven't done anything with it.
Is that about?
But the carriage house is, is a.
I have no idea, I don't know what they're proposing.
It's a whole, it is a whole, but it's based on this.
We don't know.
I haven't chosen anything.
I don't know, so, that was an estimate.
So, for a hundred, your budget is a hundred K.
All right.
Knock yourself out.
Carriage house.
Yeah, that, that was just an estimate, um.
Try the under under.
They, they made this year as the ADA accessibility.
But believe me, I, I, when we, we have discussions with departments and, and departments, my thing is often, don't spend it all, so, um.
Well, don't sandbag it either.
No, but, but, but that, but it impacts us when we come up to the C.O.P. issue. Because this is the budget that we have to set cash aside for and then never touch. And if you look back in the past, the, the tap, I'm just looking at the changes, street lighting went from six thousand five hundred to sixty thousand. Other contract services went from eight thousand seven hundred to sixty-four thousand. I don't know what those are, they're just in the budget. I mean, the, most of the other stuff is all within range, but those things sort of jump out at you.
So, one, one of the things that I think Bill mentioned earlier, and properly redirected where I was going, which is, um, there's a difference between conservatively budgeting now and making realistic assessments, where we need to know exactly if they possibly can, which I can see that to be true. So, I.
True.
Just make sure we have a process in place to.
That's, yeah, so, but, but it, once you've approved a budget, it's easy to go with that budget, so, yeah, that's, that's a very important exercise.
It's a important distinction, and one you'll see when we get to mid-year, we'll know, as Bob pointed out, we'll know exactly what the property taxes are gonna be in terms of the revenue side. We'll know what projects we are or are not going to do, we'll have six months being in the park, we'll know what the impact is. At this point, we just don't know, and there are still a lot of projects out there that we have to do, that we've done every year. Park path improvements due to A.D.A., trip and fall hazards in the park, you see them marked out on the pathways there at the park now, we've already gone through and done that. Now, we've got to do the work, uh, and we haven't been doing a lot of things around town, as we've been saving for the civic center project. Now, we know what those bids are, so we'll put some of that money back in the budget to do some of those projects that we've been putting off.
But, not that you, you don't do, there's George, you do a great job, okay? There have been other people here, a former police chief, who, when we talked to them about the budget, him about the budget, it was like, I got the budget. I got the budget, I'm allowed to spend it, okay? And I think the concern could be that you have the budget, but you can't spend it, cause we made a guesstimate. We just wanna make sure, just because the money is there, they say, oh, well, this is a great idea, we should probably go do that, okay? I'd rather, eh, that if we need a major facilities improvement, that you bring it to the council and we add to it, as opposed to have it in there because we just might need it. I mean, that's, that's my view, um, be a little more conservative in some of these areas because of the thing about, hey, I've got the money, and I'm allowed to do it. I mean, that is, not this government, but that is a government approach, okay? That is concerning.
It's the user or loser approach.
Approach.
Yeah, but not here.
We don't do that here.
No, no, I don't do that. Chief McCollum, no, no, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it, once, you know, like, like the carriage house bathrooms, once we do that.
I agree, we don't do that, but if you look at the budget, what we do is we take the previous year as the baseline, you nick it up a little bit essentially. So, we kinda do do that, in the sense that this year's budget is based on last year's expenditures and budget, right? So, if you, if you don't use it in two thousand seventeen, it's not gonna be there for year two thousand eighteen, and somehow it's, it's. So, it, it is kinda built into the system, we are indeed doing a little bit of that, yeah.
Okay, let me ask another question, just take it a different angle. Okay, so, you are explaining that building improvements went from forty-five hundred dollars. Okay, so you are explaining that building improvements went from forty-five hundred dollars to a hundred and sixty thousand because we put a hundred thousand in for carriage house bathrooms. Isn't that a capital improvement project? Why is that in the general fund?
Well, because we don't have, if, we don't have any capital improvement funds for anything other than, um, streets and the civic center. And just in the beginning of this, anything that's not designated, um, from other funding sources, the general fund's in charge of.
What other items? But, but if I don't ask about it by going to the line item and saying, we just went from four thousand dollars to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, when would we ever know that there's a hundred thousand dollars in to do bathroom improvements in the carriage house, which we haven't discussed?
Well, it's in the, it's in the narrative.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just asking, how would we know? I would assume that would be a capital improvement item.
It's in the narrative as well as part of the operations budget. Our public works operations budget includes park maintenance and bathroom renovations, path improvements. Those are all park renovations, not large CIP projects, right?
I thought we created a replacement, uh, facility replacement fund that has a half million bucks in it.
We did, and that's all dedicated to the civic center, the town side project.
Yeah, civic center.
Really?
Yes.
To any, any other building improvements?
At this point.
And then when the civic center doors open, we'll begin putting more money into that fund annually as a depreciation account.
For the future. And how about that, please, for our budget?
Yeah, what is the logic?
Are you there?
Yeah, we're in there. Robert, yes, sir. What, what, what question do you have on?
Well, I mean, we've increased public works, uh, by an increase of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, a hundred thousand of which is for the bathrooms and the carriage house. And I'm looking at the staff report, that's not mentioned. So I'm just wondering what else is in here that isn't mentioned, that, that just happened to come up.
Well, the, the current budget was a hundred and thirty-six thousand for that, for, in that building improvement. You're looking at four thousand, that's what we spent last fiscal year.
Correct, that's correct.
So a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
So I understand that the budget was higher, I, I, I understand that. So I am looking at what we spent, not what we budgeted, you're right.
Right, so, the, this year, we did the pavilion bathrooms, right? And then also budgeted was the park path component. Well, the park path, uh, majority, we didn't do that, so that stayed in, okay?
As a refund.
We need to redo it, we, it stayed in the budget currently, right? So.
So that's part of the one sixty.
Right.
I mean, I, I get that, and then, yeah, I guess, I wouldn't have assumed that was general fund, I would've assumed it was capital improvement, but. And it's considered under maintenance.
And carriage restrooms are men- mentioned on page ten of the staff report.
It is.
Yes, sir.
At the, it, it's the bottom of, it's towards the end.
The operations increase of one eighteen.
Right, in, in the, um, uh, public works department.
And it's not, and the hundred thousand is not the line item for the bathrooms, bathrooms are twenty-four thousand.
So what's the difference?
Although, the increase is twenty-four thousand to the budget, to a hundred and sixty. But we don't know, we're, of the park path component and the carriage house, those two amounts are equals a hundred and sixty thousand. But we assume that the carriage house, the park path, maybe about sixty thousand, carriage house restrooms, a hundred thousand. Are we gonna say here market all for like that? Probably not, but we're just, you know, we're estimating, and of course, if it's gonna be higher, we will bring it back to the council. We will have to bring it back to council anyways.
It's, it's gotta go through the public bid and award process and all that stuff.
And we'll let, you know, we have a hundred and sixty thousand budgeted in the, uh, the, uh, public works department for this, you know? Um, eighty thousand will be coming out of this budget, so that's a little.
I've got a couple of rounds, I just talked to you about.
Okay. Police department budget, eight million seventy-nine thousand for fiscal year nineteen twenty. Uh, the increase in total is a three hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Well, so, um, I, I disagree with that number because four bullets down, you say the operational budget decreased two hundred thousand. So you add those two numbers together, so the other thing is in the police department, an increase five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Correct, so five hundred and fifty-four minus the two hundred and one thousand decrease is.
Gives you your overall budget, but the thing is, is that, but there were other things, there were increases totaling five hundred and fifty-four thousand. All right, so let's, let's focus on those five hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand items.
Of the five hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five thousand is salaries component. Eight thousand is, um, the earned benefit component.
That's a four percent.
Yes.
Okay, so tell me that number again.
That's two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
But it, but it.
Doesn't say that.
It looks like, so it, I'm just comparing it to the adjusted budget that you gave on, on the slide, or in, in the staff report. And that's a, it's a ten percent increase, so it's more than four percent.
And the UAL is a hundred and fifty-six thousand of that total.
But no, I'm just looking at the line item called regular salaries, would that include UAL?
No.
No. Regular salaries, the adjusted budget was two million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The recommended budget is three hundred, three million two hundred and thirty thousand. So that's about a three hundred thousand dollar increase, which is a little more than ten percent, I think, but it's about ten percent.
Is that because we're looking for more people?
So the adjusted budget, two point nine regular salaries?
Yeah.
To the recommended budget, three point two?
Correct.
That, that was adjusted because we're short-staffed, so we increased the, at mid-year, we increased the overtime, um, um, budget, um, using.
Like overtime is a separate line item.
But we're doing a budget for the following year, you know, starting in July, and the chief is in the process of recruiting. So he should start out not with a bunch of overtime plus the money for the staff that maybe he'll hire and maybe you won't. It should be expecting that he's gonna hire those people, and if not, then he make the adjustment.
So the eighteen nineteen adopted budget had three million in there for regular salaries and three hundred and fifty for overtime. At mid-year, because we were short-staffed, we didn't fill the position, so the regular salary number dropped. And that shifted over to the overtime budget, which went up.
Right.
So then in the recommended budget, you're back to full-time employment, everybody on staff, no additional folks, but everybody's gonna be here. That's three point two inclusive of that four percent adjustment. And then the overtime budget dropped back down to three fifty.
So, I, I have the same issue in the finance department budget, where we increased it as much as we did with thirty-one thousand. If I took, when I, when I divide thirty-one thousand by four percent, I guess seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, which I doubt is the amount of salary that three people get. So, I, and when I look at the three mil-, okay, let's, if we take the three million and we go up to three million two hundred and thirty thousand, I don't know what two hundred and thirty thousand is, but it's more than four percent. Four percent of three million is a hundred and twenty thousand. So that's, that's a hundred and ten thousand more than four percent.
It, it's, the, the increase was at four percent, but as, we're short-staffed and we have, um, um, new positions open, when we budget it, we, we put it as a certain level of salary.
And it's also not, it's not, here's your base salary, everybody goes up by four percent. It's, okay, you're at step C.
Exactly.
So not only are you gonna go to step D because of a merit increase, which is a five percent increase for you.
Right.
But there's also that projected of four percent overall on the overall salary. So we have maybe of the, of the thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-one staff or so, eighteen of them might be at step D and three at step C and.
Right.
That sort of thing. So there's merit increases that are factored into that, so it's not gonna be a straight four percent.
Right.
But we can give you what that detail is if you would like to see that.
I have a, I have a question about that, because it's, it's what I think that Rick is saying, that he, uh, it's black and white on the chart and it looks like a lot more than four percent increase. But what you're saying is the adjusted budget for twenty eighteen nineteen of the two point nine only accounted for, let's say, twenty.
Right.
Officers. And in the recommended nineteen twenty budget, we're recommending fully deployment. And we're, so that would be maybe twenty-one or twenty-two staff as well as a four percent.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's why that percentage doesn't.
Right, between those two numbers, correct.
Equate exactly to just a four percent.
Well, between the adopted budget and the recommended budget, Rick's point is, that's more than four percent. Some of that gap is the transition of, of, um, merit increases that are due to particular staff that have been here certain periods of years, get a performance evaluation, the increase. We can give you that sort of detail, uh, to provide that, and you get that as part of the final budget.
Right, it's in the final budget, and, and, and to kinda echo that, is we have newer police officers that have started at the lower part of the, the steps, so you're gonna have more officers having more step increases, right?
So that, that's perfectly reasonable.
Right.
And what I would suggest, when you explain it then, is to say, you know, of the increase, X amount is the four percent, which looks like it's about fifty-five percent, and Y amount is, you know, I don't know, a great increase or whatever else it might be, but we don't know it unless you explain it. So what you, it's only your explanation that we're going off of.
And, and the thing is, is you, you say, well, we're gonna see it at the final, but the final, our next study session's gonna be on capital. All right, so that's May, and then we're getting, then we getting ready to approve it, okay? Which is the big pack, and that's at a council meeting, and so.
We have another budget study session June, beginning of June.
Where you get the full package together.
Yeah, that's a lot of data that are open at that time.
It's gonna be an all-day event.
Yeah, dinner, lunch, breakfast.
Well, but some people have meetings to go to at the end of this, at the end of the day, so, you know, I mean, this, this is a suggestion, I think that because of the fact that we have these meetings and park and rep has meetings tonight, and the airport group has meetings tonight, and people have to go depending on their schedule. And so we can't have a five-hour meeting when we only have time for two.
We have to start earlier.
Right, or.
Do it on a Saturday.
Or get it in two hours.
Spend more time.
It's my suggestion.
Spend more time.
I think we always have good suggestions.
Two bits.
We're gonna rattle out.
But, I, I mean, is the answer to that, I don't have too much time, but I'd like to understand better why we track UAL by department? Cause I, I'm, in, in some ways, it feels distorted.
Well, we, we do it because.
There's a short answer, I think, I don't know if you can just explain it to me unless there's another counselor present.
UAL by department is because, right now, that's how we get, we get charged. Miscellaneous employees, this is the amount, and public safety employees, this is the amount. So for public safety, it's easy, it's, it's all PD. But miscellaneous employees includes portions of PD and then the rest of, um, the town employees.
That's just allocated.
And it's just allocated to two departments.
This is distorting to me, you know, I look at your finance, with the three employees and there's a UAL number, and the UAL number really doesn't relate to the, the fact there's three employees.
And we, no, but we came up with the allocation, it includes, we, we went back, when we took who is retired from those departments, and that's how we allocate it to departments. So it's not just finance only has three people and finance only eighty percent.
No, I, I, I get that, I get that.
So that's how we came up with that allocation.
That's why it's distorted.
I, 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 I have a question on UAL also. So where, these UAL amounts, is this what we're paying to calpers, or is it?
There are two components to what we pay the calpers, the ten percent and the twenty-three percent. That's the active employees, and then for all that unfunded actuarial liability retirees, that's the UAL.
And, and where we've got a line item.
Right.
Here we've got one for miscellaneous, two percent.
And that's forty-four thousand.
Right, forty-four and seven seventy-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, is that the, is that dollar amount actually being paid to calpers?
Yeah.
And that makes up the million-dollar number that.
Yes, sir.
At some point, we'll probably treat UAL like we have treated previous payments to open. We'll treat it as kind of a steal our money we get back on the ERAF and pay it that way, not have it as a budget.
Right, and then we've had those discussions, um, of doing that, but other priorities can, can be.
Do I have, uh, is there public comment here, or can I add, ask some questions?
Sure.
I've got more than I, you've got time for, so I'll just concentrate on the burglary. You know, I think looking at it at fifty thousand feet, you know, you got a problem, and your police not capturing the bad guys. And I wouldn't be, wouldn't be surprised with a twenty percent increase in your police department, rather than whatever it is. I mean, just from the feel of the public, I think they're expecting more than you're giving. And I would think that it would show in your budget someplace, but I, I haven't talked to the chief, so I don't know his thinking. And I just, at fifty thousand feet, you got a problem and it doesn't seem like your budget reflects it. Cause you're spending the same amount of money as you have to the same number of officers when you've got sixteen burglaries that have not been processed by anybody. And I just think that your image in town is not good because of that. The second thing is the public work, we had an eight hundred thousand dollar jump three years ago, I, I don't remember what it was, but it stayed. Do you remember that slide? It was, it was. Robert, help me. Where's your slide for the public work?
You're saying it went up eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, I think that was after six.
Um, I, I'm gonna stay till the very last minute, cause I wanna hear this one.
Okay.
Uh, it's, uh.
Uh, sorry. So, again, this kinda goes back to, we, we have our, our budget, our operational budget, but, but.
Million five up to two million two, seven hundred thousand.
So in, in seventeen eighteen, the actual was one point five million we spent. But in the seventeen eighteen budget, the budget for the public works was about two million in the budget. So we came in five hundred thousand dollars less in our expenditure budget. Meaning we spent less. But, again, though, of that, of that one point five million, right, part of that's the MCE contract. We didn't spend all of that. You know, we, the MCE is a contract where it's actual time work and it's allocated. So we, we had savings in there, we had savings because we didn't, some of the, of other budget items, we didn't use.
We didn't know how many trees were gonna fall.
Exactly.
We didn't know what was needed to be done at the fall.
The unknown, right.
I don't know what it was, but it looks, you know, seven hundred thousand increase in one year, and then stays at that level.
It, it, it didn't increase.
It didn't increase, but there was a cost savings in seventeen eighteen.
So the thing.
Under budget.
Right.
All right, my last point. My last point is, your revenues and your building fees seem very low based on what I read in the newspapers of what's going on. I mean, it's a hot real estate market, and I don't understand where, where those people are building and what's going on. And I just can't believe that a one percent increase with a four percent salary increase is considered.
So, Robert kinda answered that a little bit, I think, saying that, um, those building fees, it could be seasonal and we're kind of just tracking exactly where we are right now, uh, and because of the rain and the season, and it will probably bump up, uh, towards, uh, mid-year. Um, so, um, yeah, but I just wanna make a point that, it, to re, uh, remind myself that the building, our building department, we cannot make money on our building fees. It's the cost of doing services, the cost of giving services, it kinda has to be a wash. And so the contract with MCE is structured such that, um, the.
With Inner West.
With, sorry, with Inner West, yes. It's structured such that it kind of, uh, what comes in, uh, what they do, it's almost a wash. I mean, we can't profit from building fees. Is that right?
That's correct.
Well, we can profit from the fines.
Well, that, that is, yes, that, that's not. Well, that that is, yes, but that's not like permanent fees and.
Fees, fees, you're correct. And if we profit from it, it becomes a tax on your prop sixty two.
Right, so.
However, we can fully, we can fully allocate all costs associated with it. So part of gorgeous, part of bills, everybody's costs associated.
Right, right. So just, we've got to keep that in mind. I mean, you know, building fees or whatever.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ann. That was.
And Robert and I are happy to have sit down one-on-one line item discussions of the budget, if you'd like. We're happy to do that.
Do those fees, the penalty for?
The construction time limit penalty?
Yeah, construction time limit fee, are they shared?
No.
No.
It's just a revenue law.
It's just a revenue because it's either sixty two or twenty six. Says, there's seven exceptions. One of the exceptions are penalties and like revenue that we make from the park. Those are exceptions. So, but anything else, any increase in a fee that isn't an actual cost of doing business, which can be allocated, but how do you have to do a study to do that before you can?
Well, we did that a couple of years.
No, we did.
When I mean shared, I mean with.
It's changed since then.
Contract or?
No, with interwest, no. No. And so that we need to revisit.
Well, we are going to decide.
Yes.
So we were on the police chart. I guess I'd like to know what was a launch, what's a launcher? We bought two launchers. Is it like for a drone?
So a launcher is utilized for, it's utilized for a less than lethal round that we use.
Oh, it's the beanbag thing?
It's like a beanbag, they call it a collapsible nose, so it's like a sponge round. And I currently have one launcher that the sergeant car carries. Evaluating program and having it available because it's as long course from across the country, more and more scrutiny. We need to make sure that we have those tools available to us that we deploy that are used every option prior to lethal force. So that will, that will equip the sergeant and the two officers to have a readily.
He was just worried it was like a grenade launcher.
All right, so is that it, Robert?
Yeah. There's just the summary and revenue reserves. I mean, you've seen there's about three point.
Seven.
This was all part of your.
I have a question about the body cameras. I also make sure I understand how, we, what are we funding for body cameras for this upcoming year?
Thirty five thousand in this budget? And then just to give you a brief story of the body cams, so, go ahead, sir.
I was going to say, so I, this says decrease, and I don't, I just don't understand how this reads.
No, decrease in equipment replacement. So we spent a hundred and eighty thousand for police vehicles.
I just wanted to know, are we buying new body cameras, replacing old body cameras? What are we doing? I think body camera is really important.
Yes.
Yeah, so our current system, BVIEW, was bought out by Taser now called Axon. And because they bought out this BVIEW model, they will no longer support it at the end of this year. And some of our BVIEW cameras now, they're about four, we bought about four years ago, we replaced them. For SARN has some issues, as they don't support it, we're trying to get ahead of the curve because once these things start to fail, then we can't buy camera by camera. We have to move. And the advantage of moving to Axon is they support platform that the DA's office is now using for digital transfer of evidence.
And one of our important things is, we changed our policy. It used to be, may use your camera on citizen.
Yeah, then you got to.
Now it's a must. You shall.
And how about in the cars? Is there any change in cameras in the cars?
No, and when we do purchase a car, one is spec that comes with, we replace the system in the car, fully equipped.
Well, that become that way, you equip it.
We equip it.
I just hope these cameras are, they kind of stays around.
Yeah.
Didn't you talk about mileage for the motors?
The motorcycles?
Yeah, I can brief you on that real quick. So the two that we're replacing, one is seven years old, one is six. The mileage on both is just under forty thousand. And as I've learned some things, these two motorcycles are what they call dry clutch. They're very expensive to repair the way they're designed. The bike that we're keeping is a wet clutch. Motorcycle, the two that we'll be purchasing are also wet clutch. I don't know exactly what that means, other than with the BMW where it was here a couple of months ago. They reengineered it where going forward, the maintenance across these bikes is going to be a lot less right now. And if we moved in an analysis of of our maintenance and the cost it will have, plus it's, you know, when it's getting sixty seven years old.
American miles, American miles doesn't seem like a lot.
They're not sixty seven years old. Those BMWs are.
Twenty twelve and twenty fifteen.
Uh, did we consider American-made Harley?
Uh, we did, but the decision is to go forward at the end of the year.
I just assumed.
Are you trying to make America great?
Well, I'm just saying again, but it's it's not a four.
Zero workers are trying to make Santa Cruz?
Yeah, there there are some residents in town that are interested in supporting the police department financially. And the chief's been chatting with some of us, not in terms of the building, which is one of the first questions we always ask, but they'd rather do it in terms of tangible equipment.
Yeah, I mean, the.
Cameras and.
Cameras, attention to the motorcycles. A few of our residents, you know, as they develop their relationships, and you all know, they've been very generous and they're very serious and willing to support the police department. And we give them what we feel are, you know, bang for the buck, list of equipment waiting here back from one resident. Could be that they decide to purchase the motorcycles, just like a resident purchased the canine dog or the dogs and the canine vehicles, so.
That residence.
I keep working, I keep working on building those today.
And the schools are paying for half of the SROs?
I have two outliers, one we're just waiting to receive, I believe, from men of college. And I'm just waiting with one Redwood School District. They've been dealing with a lot of issues, you're probably over closing their schools. But I have been in close conversation with the superintendent and I think I have him on the ropes to go ahead and make that agreement. And that would be about a hundred thousand dollars.
Ninety, ninety thousand.
All right.
Still like American-made.
Well, I agree.
So I know we're expensive, but.
Can make them in America.
Yeah, so are those parts and maintenance.
The hats are made in China.
So is the ladder, so is the ladder. Sorry.
Okay, any other comments on the budget? I'm sorry, this meeting went over six, we have a hard stop at six.
Some of them.
But we wanted to get to the.
If you would like Robert to come in during our next one-on-one, just let me know and we'll sit down and go through it one department by department.